Two, three.
Testing microphone check one, two, three.
I see in the chambers we have councillor Vesante, councillor Brower, deputy mayor Singh, councillor Power, and online we have?
To you, Mayor, online we have councillor Fortini, councillor Maderos, and councillor Tour.
Okay, and I was informed by councillor Kinney he's on other municipal business today.
And councillor Santos has sent her regrets.
Okay, and councillor Santos sent her regrets, okay. Is that councillor Palaschi there?
Yep.
Okay, you're sort of cutting out a little bit. We'll have to check your feed.
Councillor Palaschi is also online, Nessie's just trained.
As we begin today's meeting, we would like to acknowledge that we are gathering here today on the treaty territory, the Mississauga is the credit First Nation, before them, the traditional territory of the Haudes, Neehe, Huron, and Wendat. We also acknowledge that many First Nations, Maiteen, and other global indigenous people that now call Brampton their home. We are honoured to live, work, and enjoy this land. Please all rise for the singing of our national anthem, be followed by a moment of personal reflection.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all our command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. Welcome to our regular council meeting of June 12th, 2024. We are now at item two, approval of the agenda. The clerk will have some updates for us.
Through you, Chair. A revised agenda was published yesterday at approximately 4:00 PM. No new items were added to the agenda. The revised agenda notes that item 6.1, announcement 2023 United Way campaign check presentation, has been withdrawn at the request of staff. And the revised agenda also includes the attachments for items 8.1, Government Relations Matters, 12.2, Minutes, Planning and Development Committee of May 27th, 2024, and 12.3, Summary of Recommendations from Committee of Council on June 5th.
Thank you. Are there any items members wish to raise at this point? Councillor Vesante?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. Would like to, based on discussion from staff that just came to my attention this morning, I would like to add an in-camera item for our discussion for us to seek advice from the city solicitor.
Through you, Chair. In addition to that reason, it also relates to potential negotiations. So I'd also include section K as an exception.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other items? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion moved by councillor Vesante, seconded by councillor Brower, to approve the agenda as amended. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. This now takes us to declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any member have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Seeing none, the clerk will so note. We're now ready to move to the next item of business on today's council agenda, item four minutes. We have the following council minutes before us today. 4.1 minutes, City Council, May 29th, 2024. Do any members have any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Seeing none. I have a motion moved by councillor Brower, seconded by councillor Vesante, to approve the minutes as published and circulated. Approved. No one opposed. Council, as part of our consent motion process, I wish to read each agenda item that is subject to the consent motion, and any member may verbally identify the item to be held for debate during this meeting. Any item not held for debate will be considered as part of the consent motion voted on for approval. I'll start reading the relevant agenda items, and members can identify any items to be held for debate. 8.1, Staff Update, Government Relations Matters.
Hold.
12.1, Minutes, Committee of Council. 12.2, Minutes, Planning and Development Committee. 12.3, Summary Recommendations, Committee of Council. 16.1, Referred Matters List. 19.1, Closed Session Minutes. 19.2, Closed Session Minutes.
I think that's a hold for a verbal update.
Okay.
Oh, three, sorry, 19.3.
19.3 is okay, so 19.2 is approved. 19.4 is also hold. The clerk will summarize those items to be included in the consent motion for approval.
Through you, Mayor Brown. 8.1, Staff Update Regarding Government Relations Matter is held. 12.3, Summary of Recommendations from Committee of Council, June 5th, 2024 is held. Items 19.3 and 19.4, both closed session discussion items, are held. And the rest remains on consent.
Thank you. We have a motion moved by councillor Brower, seconded by councillor Power, to approve the consent motion. All those in favor? Motion carries. Announcements. We have two proclamations today, and I will read them out. It's World Sickle Cell Day. The World Health Organisation, 2006, the United Nations in 2008, and the Government of Ontario in 2021 have recognised sickle cell disease, SCD, as a global and local public health priority to raise awareness. Designated on the 19th day of June every year, World Sickle Cell Day is recognised. Out of an estimated 6,500 Canadians affected by sickle cell disease, 3,500 live in Ontario. The Sickle Cell Awareness Group of Ontario recognises SCD as an increasingly important medical issue in the province through education, awareness programmes, outreach campaigns, and conversations with community-based organisations and hospitals. This organisation is doing its part to reduce the stigma and discrimination faced with families with children, youth, and adults living with sickle cell disease. I am Mayor Patrick Brown, hereby proclaim World Sickle Cell Day in the city of Brampton on June 19th. Our next one is actually recognition of technicians, and I believe this is one that councillor Brower would love to read out on behalf of council's behalf.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. National Philbotomy Technicians' Recognition Week. The Philbotomy profession has evolved over the years where principles and methods have changed dramatically. The profession spans a wide range of employment opportunities and requires a specific knowledge base and professional competency. The Philbotomy Technicians are healthcare professionals responsible for obtaining blood specimens from patients. They are skilled in performing various procedures such as venipuncture, micro-collection, and specimen processing while ensuring patient safety and confidentiality. This week raises awareness and recognises these skilled professionals as they help create a professional and comforting atmosphere for patients by offering them guidance and support. National Philbotomy Technicians' Recognition Week will be celebrated with colleagues, community organisations, schools, colleagues in labs, physicians, offices, hospitals, blood banks, and among more. Philbotomy technicians aid in maintaining patient health and promoting lab efficiency, and through their hard work and dedication, Philbotomy Technicians of Canada have made a vital contribution to the quality of healthcare in Brampton and across Canada. I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim June 24th to 28th, 2024 as National Philbotomy Technicians' Recognition Week in the city of Brampton. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brower. Thank you for your service in healthcare prior to your election to council. I know anytime we recognise our healthcare heroes, you're always proud to add your voice to that chorus. This takes us to public delegations, staff presentations. There are no deputations or staff presentations at this time. This takes us to Government Relations Matters. I believe this was an item that was held by councillor Singh. Andre, we had a busy week with government relations.
Good morning. We had. Thank you. Through to Mayor. I'll begin today's presentation with an overview of regional matters. We can jump to the next slide, please. We'll begin with item 7.5, which is a delegation from the Centre for Community Energy Transformation, which will provide an update on progress made to date, an overview of a business plan for the centre, as well as services and priority areas. It's important to note that the Centre for Community Energy Transformation originated with the Brampton 2040 vision and is now incorporated as a non-for-profit. The centre will be presenting to the city council this coming fall to provide an overview of their activities and a similar update to the one coming up this week at the regional council. Next slide, please. Next, we have item 8.2, Supporting International Students and PEO through Collaborative Community Partnerships. Back in July of 2023, the regional council directed regional staff, Region of PEO's Community Safety and Wellbeing team to work with Sheraton College and other community partners to address needs of international students in the region. Consequently, Region of PEO and Sheraton College convened the inaugural meeting of the International Students Collaborative, a committee of key multi-sector partners tasked with developing an implementation plan for PEO aligned with the tenants of the Brampton Charter for international, for improving the international student experience. City staff support the work of the collaborative and regional staff and will continue to work with PEO to further define the challenges and issues faced by international students, strengthen advocacy, and work towards solutions. Next slide, please. Next, we have item 9.3, Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan Annual Report. The report provides an update on ongoing implementation of PEO's 2020-24 Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan and approach to review and refresh the plan. There are two additional focus areas that have been added to the plan. One is oversight and administration of the Building Safer Community Fund, and support and leadership on already mentioned International Students Collaborative. City staff support the report and update from the regional staff and will continue working with the region to improve the safety and wellbeing of residents. Next slide, please. Next, we have item 13.2, Bill 162 to Get It Done Act 2024, Modifications to the Region of PEO Official Plan and Environmental Assessment Process. Bill 162 amends the official plan adjustment Act 2023 to retroactively reinstate 18 modifications originally made in the November of 2022, decision to the Region of PEO Official Plan. Nine modifications that were maintained as part of Bill, of Bill 150, remain in Bill 162, resulting in a total of 27 modifications being maintained. Bill also amends the Environmental Assessment Act to clarify that expropriation is one of the ways properties can be acquired for projects before the environmental assessment process is completed, while streamlining and improving the EA process, including moving to a project list approach. The changes in PEO's official plan do not generally impact Brampton or its official plan. Most changes are minor in their nature and of housekeeping purposes. City staff also concur with the points raised by the region regarding Changes to Environmental Assessment Act, and welcome changes that will result in a streamlined and simplified process. Next slide, please. Moving on to provincial matters. Last week, we saw the premier announce a cabinet shuffle, which saw a swap between the Energy Minister Stephen Leach and former Education Minister Stephen Leach and Energy Minister Todd Smith. The shuffle also sees Steve Clark return in his capacity as Government House Leader. Overall, the changes to the cabinet have not had any significant impact to Brampton's representation at the cabinet table. MPP Pravdisar Karya retains his post as Minister of Transportation, and MPP Charmaine Williams also retains her seat at the cabinet table. The next substantive opportunity to engage with members of provincial cabinet will be at the upcoming 2024 AMO conference in Ottawa in mid-August. Staff have begun preparations and will provide updates as we approach the conference. Next slide, please. On June 3rd, we have the Infrastructure Ontario and William Osler-Hertz Health Systems have issued a request for qualifications for a new PEO Memorial Hospital Phase II redevelopment project. The RFQ is the first step in a process to select a team to help deliver the project. Submissions will be reviewed and teams shortlisted. Shortlisted teams will be then invited to respond to a request for proposals, which is expected to be released in fall 2024. City has been actively advocating for expedited process in terms of approvals and progression to construction phase for PEO Memorial, as the council will be well aware, in terms of healthcare funding, services, and that issue has been a top priority for the city, and staff continue to advocate with the Province Ministry of Health and other cabinet members to highlight the dire need in Brampton for adequate healthcare funding, as well as quick progression of the redevelopment of PEO Memorial Hospital. Next slide, please. Last Friday, we have seen the deputy prime minister visit Brampton to announce joint federal provincial transit funding of more than 17.4 million to improve transit in a city and region. As a result of this announcement, the city of Brampton will benefit from a purchase of 15 replacement buses, which will help replace older vehicles which have reached the end of their life cycle. The Region of PEO will benefit from this funding by purchasing 23 specialised trans-hel- accessible buses, as well as being able to upgrade their garage facilities to accommodate battery electric buses. This is a significant announcement for the city. It represents joint federal and provincial funding for both transit systems, improving quality reliability of transit being offered in Brampton. The city continues the ongoing engagement with both levels of government as part of the broader advocacy effort for key infrastructure projects and transit priorities for Brampton. Next slide, please. Next, we have a quick update on the just concluded 2024 FCM Conference and AGM. The conference took place under the theme of redefining our future. Key areas of discussion including a new municipal fiscal framework, housing and homelessness, and infrastructure gaps. Delegates have also debated and voted on four key resolutions that will help guide FCM's advocacy in the coming months. Of particular importance is a resolution that calls for federal support for food banks, enhancements to shelter supports for women and survivors of intimate partner violence, as well as harassment of elected local government officials. Next slide, please. During the conference, councillor Rowan O'Santos was also re-elected for a fifth term on the FCM Board of Directors. Councillor Santos has served on the board since 2020. Recently, she had helped to lead implementation of FCM's work in an around of municipal grant framework, advocating for a new approach to funding the municipal sector. This will maintain Brampton's seat at the FCM's board and ensure that the city has a voice at the national discussion as it relates to municipal sector. Next slide, please. And the last slide today highlights the outcome of the just completed by-election in Mississauga, with former Ward Five councillor Caroline Parish securing the mayoral seat. Also during that by-election, Natalie Hart was elected as a new Ward Five councillor. And this concludes today's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Andre? Seeing none. Just to say, obviously, a very busy week in government relations with Canadian big city mayors, FCM, of course, the deputy prime minister's announcement. I had the meeting with the federal infrastructure minister and the prime minister, so we've all been busy advocating on behalf of Brampton. Thank you to councillor Vesante and deputy mayor Singh for going all the way to FCM, and also congratulations to Rowan O'Santos, who was elected with a huge margin once again to be on the national executive of FCM, so it's an additional strong voice for the city of Brampton. And thank you, Marlin, our CEO was very busy with all those meetings at FCM as well. So, thank you for the update, Andre, and we have a motion moved by councillor Vesante, seconded by councillor Power. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
This takes us to... There's no reports from corporate officials. There are no reports from accountability officers. We have no committee reports before us today. So, actually, 12.3, Summary Recommendations to Committee Council, June 5th, 2024. Do any members have questions or comments regarding the committee reports? Councillor Singh.
Yeah, just a quick amendment to one of the recommendations. I'll move it with, and I have councillor Brower second it, related to corporate services, just to add some more clear wording around integrating the Brampton library.
Okay.
Okay. Move by myself.
Is there wording on the screen here? Yep. Okay, moved by deputy mayor Singh, seconded by?
Councillor Brower.
Councillor Brower. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay. This takes us to our next item, which is, is that referred Matters List? The list is published quarterly in the meeting agenda. Do any members have any questions for referred Matters List? Seeing none. We'll move to public question period. Is there any members of the public who have questions for any decision made at today's council? Seeing none. I note there is a 15-minute limit for questions. I'll ask the clerk if there are any questions submitted during the course of today's meeting.
Through you, Mayor. I have not received any requests.
This takes us to bylaws. We are now at the portion of the meeting dealing with adoption of city bylaws to give effect to council decisions made at this meeting. I have a motion moved by councillor Brower, seconded by councillor Tor, to approve the bylaws. All those in favor? Motion carries. We do have a number of closed session items, and I will have the clerk identify the items that we are going into close for.
Through you, Mayor. Items 19.1 and 19.2, closed session minutes, have been addressed on consent. So, we have left. Item 19.3 is an open meeting exception under section 239 2E of the municipal act, litigation or potential litigation. And 19.4 was added today. It is also an item for discussion related to potential litigation and ongoing negotiations.
Okay. So, we have a motion moved by councillor Brower, seconded by councillor Tor, to go into closed session. All those in favor? Motion carries. The meeting is now recessed for 15 minutes to 10:10 to go into closed session. That will be in committee boardroom CH4A. To members of the public watching today's meeting, all council meetings must start and end in public session. After closed session is completed, we will reconvene in public and report out for any action arising from closed session and passing a confirming bylaw. We'll see members of council and staff in the closed session room at 10:10. And it's in person only.
Testing microphone check one, two, three.
What time are we officially returning yet? What time did I say? Everyone from the room is here, so. Okay, in the continuing interest of transparency and open government, I will report in public session any outcomes from today's closed session business. As a result of the closed session today, I wish to report the following, and the clerk will put it on the screen for us. Nineteen point three item was considered and direction was given to staff. Nineteen point four, direction was given to defer the item to the June twenty ninth meeting of council regarding mobile licensing bylaw six seven, twenty twenty four, and the BIA. This takes us to a confirming bylaw. I have a motion moved by councillor Power and seconded by councillor Singh to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. All those in favor? Motion carries. Adjournment, our last item of business, item twenty one, and that is our council's next scheduled to meet on Wednesday, June twenty sixth, at nine thirty a.m. I have a motion moved by councillor Vasante, seconded by councillor Power, to adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor? Motion carries.